Hello friends and neighbors, I'm honored to be running for mayor of Corralville. For many years, I've had the privilege of serving you on the Corralville City Council, and along the way, I became a certified elected municipal official in the state of Iowa, graduated from the Greater Iowa City Community Leadership Program, and I am twice elected to the Iowa League of Cities Board of Directors. Now, these experiences have given me the knowledge and perspective to servant lead, and they reinforce what I've always promised you: reliable, experienced, fair-minded leadership. Over the past 11 years, I've seen firsthand the progress we've made together. We've built strong flood protection, invested in clean water and wastewater facilities, expanded recreation trails, built and improved roads and streetscapes, upgraded recycling, strengthened our transit system, and embraced exciting new businesses. Our Clear Creek mitigation bank is receiving comments like "bold" and "strategic." We've also invested in new developments and housing programs, and through the comprehensive community plan, we're preparing Corralville to grow responsibly, with housing options for every need and stage of life. I'll continue to support our police, fire, and emergency services with the resources they need to keep every neighborhood safe. Well, that means not only responding quickly in times of crisis, but also building strong relationships between first responders and residents. So Corralville remains a place where everyone feels secure and protected. I'm proud of how our city embraces this quality of life: the library, the arts, we celebrate culture, support the food pantry, and provide recreation and sporting opportunities year-round. Serving as co-chair of our sesquicentennial in 2023 was a joy. Our community comes alive with concerts, festivals, and celebrations. The Coral Ridge Mall in the Iowa River Landing are thriving, producing revenue and fueling growth that brings economic energy and opportunity to our city. Speaking of energy and opportunity, I've long supported building a new recreation center. It's vital for the well-being of our kids and adults too, and I believe the one-cent local option sales tax can help make the dream a reality. It will initially provide a funding source for a recreation center, provide a revenue stream for funding affordable housing, and in time, other vital capital improvement projects. As mayor, my role will be to guide the council, set clear policy, and ensure Corralville's ordinances meet the needs of our residents today and in the future. I'll continue to show up, listen, and respond to you. Together, we will protect the services we rely on, expand opportunities for families and individuals, strengthen public safety, support education and food security, and guide development in a way that keeps Corralville welcoming, vibrant, and sustainable for generations to come. Corralville is a special place, and with your support, we can honor what makes it great. Thank you. Together, let's keep Corralville moving forward: safe, strong, and welcoming.
Hello, my name is Ryan Swenka, and I am running for mayor. I live and work in Corralville with my wife Alana and three dachshunds, Pretzel, Nacho, and Lemonade Shake-Up. I volunteer with Big Brothers Big Sisters, where my wife and I have been matched with our little for over five years. As mayor, there are several items I would like to advocate for and urge our council to address. First is food and housing insecurity. Corralville should fight to provide supportive housing and critical supplies to those most in need in our community, as these two issues can drastically affect the trajectory of our lives. We never know when we might find ourselves in need, and a more resilient Corralville benefits us all. Second, supporting the working class, unions, and tenants' rights. As a working-class city, it is imperative that our rights to organize and demand better of our bosses and landlords be protected. I also believe that reinforcing education-supporting initiatives is vital to assisting our schools in shaping our future. Free and safe third spaces for our children can help reduce the stress of parenting while helping shape positive social skills, behaviors, and feelings of community in our youth. I hope to improve public transit and promote other modes of travel, such as bikes, scooters, and walkability. These can increase community connectedness and mitigate expensive car-dependent sprawl. I believe in elevating civic engagement, and that increasing participation leads to more equitable outcomes. With more voices and involvement from the community, we can diminish disparities in opportunity and justice to rebuild trust, hopefully serving as a beacon to other Iowans in the process. Lastly, I hope to serve as a roadblock to fascism creeping into our community from the state and federal government. I will direct our departments to ensure that the human rights of everyone in our city, resident or guest, be protected to the greatest extent possible. Recently, our council voted to move forward with an insufficient policy regarding our contract with Flock Safety, an AI surveillance company. I oppose the installation of these privately-owned AI-powered cameras, and I oppose the surveillance of our citizens and guests. I believe it is beyond time to renew our social contract and restore trust and inclusion in our small part of the state. A better city is possible, but it will take an engaged community to get the job done. I hope that on November 4th, you will vote for and join me. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Katie Freeman, and I'm running for Corralville City Council. I've been a resident of Corralville since moving here with my family in 2014. We love this community: the parks, the trails, the restaurants, the schools, the library, and especially the people and the rich diversity that makes Corralville unique. These are the reasons we chose to settle here and stay after moving back to Iowa from California. I grew up in a household where politics were part of everyday life. We stayed informed, had lively discussions, and talked about how decisions made by those in power affect people's daily lives. Even with that upbringing, I never imagined I'd run for office myself, so why now? To answer that, I need to share a little bit more about who I am. When I was 12 years old, I wrote and circulated my first petition, an effort to save my sixth-grade teacher's job. Unfortunately, it didn't work, but it taught me the power of collective action and the importance of using my voice. Not long after that, I stepped in to stop a classmate from being bullied on the school bus. That moment is when a family friend, a good Southerner, gave me the nickname "Katie Bell." It was her affectionate term for someone who swoops in like a superhero when something isn't right. That instinct to speak up and stand with others has always been a part of me. I've always been curious about people's lived experiences, listening to their stories, and recognizing that decisions made by those in power affect different communities in different ways. That curiosity led me more recently to create and host a podcast for five years focused on craft and art. I interviewed women, non-binary, and transgender craftsperson and artists, with many guests also being people of color. These are the groups that have historically been underrepresented in craft and art spaces, and I wanted to use the platform I built to give them space to tell their stories. I absolutely loved doing it. This value of amplifying voices that often go unheard is at the heart of my campaign. So this campaign isn't about me, Katie Freeman, it's about you, the residents of Corralville. Over the past year, I've been attending city council meetings, and it's clear that the people making decisions for our community don't reflect the full diversity of the community itself. That tells me there are many more voices that need to be brought to the table. And as a woodworker, I know how to make a table bigger. That's exactly what this campaign is about: bringing more people to the table to shape decisions together. The more lived experiences we include in the room, the better we can understand the impact of our choices and make decisions that truly reflect the needs and wants of our community. So will you help me make the table bigger? Vote for Katie Freeman for Corralville City Council on November 4th. Together, we can make Corralville a place where everyone's voice has a seat at the table. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deb Gill, and I'm a candidate for the Corralville City Council. I have lived in Corralville since 1978. I'm a graduate of Iowa City High School and the University of Iowa with a BBA in Finance and Economics. I retired from the university treasury in 2014. The staff at the city of Corralville do a great job, and I want to ensure this continues. The police and fire departments are exceptional and make this a safe and stable community to live in. I also commend the Convention and Visitors Bureau for all of the events they bring to the city and the millions of dollars in revenue this generates. I fully support a local option sales tax that is on the November ballot. Fifty percent of this tax will go toward property tax relief, and the remainder will go toward building a new community recreation center. The tax does not apply to the purchase of cars or food. It's estimated the tax will generate $22 million per year. The city plans to use a portion of these funds to support affordable housing. My goals if I am elected will be: construction of the much-needed community recreation center, which is available to residents and the students of the school district; the construction of the Gather Iowa Project on Second Street and First Avenue. This project will have commercial space on Second Street with apartments behind it, which will include some low-income housing; the completion of the Forever Green extension to Dubuque Street, which will relieve traffic on 12th Avenue; and implementation of a regional traffic study to divert traffic from the residential neighborhoods to arterial roads. The communities to our north and west are continuing to grow rapidly, and this affects the daily traffic in Corralville. I am married to Tom Gill, and we have two daughters and four granddaughters who attended Corralville Central Elementary School. I was an active volunteer at the school while they were students. I'm a long-term member of the Friends of the Corralville Library, and I have been the chairperson of the Friends Book Sales for the past 15 years. The funds from the book sales support reading and library programs in Corralville. I would like to emphasize the benefits of volunteerism in the community and build opportunities for residents of all ages. Thank you.
I'm Kathy Hotson-Pillar, and I'm running for city council. My husband and I moved to Corralville from Chicago 20 years ago. He started his residency at the University of Iowa, and I worked at multiple optometry practices, some of which were an hour away. In 2008, I decided to open up my own optometry practice in Corralville, not taking into consideration the recession or how hard it would be to open up a practice cold. After five years of running my own business, I had to make a decision to either continue struggling or to close my practice and work for someone else. Lucky for me, I had a friend who offered me a job in Cedar Rapids. My children both graduated from Iowa City West High School. In the past, I've served on my church's racial and social justice teams, organized voter registration events, and spoken up at city council meetings about issues that affected marginalized members of our community. Starting in 2021, I was appointed to the Corralville Community Policing Advisory Board until it was recently dissolved by state government. The board was in charge of examining traffic stop data for discrimination, recommending training to the Corralville Police Department, and assisting residents with filing complaints about discrimination. I completed the Johnson County Community Police Academy in 2022, where I learned about law enforcement through classroom and hands-on training. Recently, I was offered the opportunity to practice optometry in Corralville again after working in Cedar Rapids for 11 years. I am thrilled to be back in Corralville and look forward to engaging more with the community. In my free time, I enjoy yoga, hiking, and volunteering at the food pantry. I'm running for city council because we all want the same things: a safe place to live, to be able to provide for our families, and to connect with people. Everyone deserves to have the resources and opportunities to achieve these basic needs. I want to bring people together. Instead of allowing differences in ideology or political views to divide us, we need to embrace our diversity and focus on our shared humanity. Affordable housing is an issue that affects all of us. When more than 30% of our income is spent on housing costs, less money is left for groceries, healthcare, and other necessities. We need to increase the supply of affordable housing as well as support projects designed to improve rental properties. Everyone should be able to afford a safe place to live. Another one of my goals is to form a partnership between the Corralville Police Department, community members, and nonprofit organizations. I've gotten to know Chief Nicholson over the past few years, and I want to continue to examine systemic issues that can lead to interactions with law enforcement. I also want to continue to build trust between the public and the police department. Feedback that I've heard from the community is that the city council should listen and be transparent. I will listen to concerns of all Corralville residents and work to answer your questions honestly. Local government matters. Please vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hai Huen, and I'm running for reelection to the Corralville City Council. Corralville is home to me, and I care deeply about this community. Over the last five years, I have worked hard to support the people who live, work, and play here, and to help move Corralville forward in a way that is fair, welcoming, and focused on what matters most to all of us. I am running again because there is still more to do, and I want to keep showing up, doing the work, with you and for you. One project I am especially excited about is the new community recreation center. Our current center is more than 50 years old. It is outdated, hard to maintain, and just doesn't meet the needs of our growing city anymore. The new center would be a big step forward. It will have a three-court gym, a walking track, fitness room, community meeting spaces, and two indoor pool areas, with three pools total. But it is not just about the building. It is about creating a place where people of all ages and abilities can connect, stay healthy, and have fun. I also believe we need to keep investing in our parks, trails, and natural spaces. These are the parts of Corralville that make it feel like home. When we expand and care for them, our city becomes safer, more beautiful, and easier to get around, whether you are walking, biking, or just enjoying nature. Everyone deserves access to clean, open space, no matter where they live in town. Now, let's talk about housing. Affordable housing isn't just a number. It is about making sure people who work here, raise family here, and retire here can actually afford to live here. A safe, stable home affects everything: your health, your kid's education, your job, your peace of mind. That is why I am committed to real solution, so people from all walks of life can call Corralville home. In my daily work with the Corralville Community Food Pantry, I see how hard it has gotten for many families to keep food on the table and why folks are struggling. State and federal leaders are cutting funding support, especially for kids, senior, and veterans. I believe food is a basic human right, and I will keep fighting for local policy that makes sure no one in Corralville goes hungry. I also believe decision about Corralville should be made right here in Corralville, not by politicians in Des Moines or Washington. We know our community best, and I will keep working to protect local control and give our staff the tools they need to deliver strong, reliable services to everyone who live here. Corralville is growing, and with that grow come real opportunity and real responsibility. That is why I am running again, because I believe local leadership matters. If we keep working together, we can build a city that is strong, connected, and ready for the future. I would be honored to earn your vote on November 4th. Let's keep moving forward together. Thank you.
Chào bạn, mình là Hỏi Hải Nguyên Võ Huỳnh. Hiện đang tranh cử vào hội đồng thành phố Corralville. Corralville là nhà của mình, và mình thật sự tự hào được sống và phục vụ cộng đồng ở đây. Trong năm năm qua, mình đã cố gắng hết sức để hỗ trợ bà con mình và cùng nhau xây dựng một thành phố công bằng, cởi mở, và vì mọi người. Mình ra tranh cử lần nữa vì còn nhiều việc cần làm, và mình muốn tiếp tục góp sức xây dựng thành phố. Một dự án lớn mà mình rất háo hức là trung tâm thể thao cộng đồng mới. Trung tâm hiện tại thì đã quá cũ, chi phí bảo trì thì cao, mà không còn đáp ứng được cho cộng đồng đang phát triển nữa. Trung tâm mới sẽ có sân thể thao, đường đi bộ bên trong, phòng tập thể dục, phòng sinh hoạt cộng đồng, và hai khu hồ bơi. Nhưng hơn hết, đây sẽ là nơi để mọi người rèn luyện sức khỏe, vui chơi, và kết nối với nhau. Chỗ này sẽ dành cho tất cả mọi người, mọi lứa tuổi, mọi hoàn cảnh. Mình cũng muốn tiếp tục đầu tư vào công viên, đường đi bộ, và các không gian thiên nhiên khác. Mấy chỗ đó chính là lý do Corralville trở thành nơi dễ sống và dễ yêu. Ai ở đâu trong thành phố cũng nên được tiếp cận không gian xanh, sạch, và thoáng mát. Về chỗ ở, mình tin rằng ai cũng xứng đáng có một mái nhà an toàn, ổn định, vừa túi tiền, dù là công nhân, người lớn tuổi, hay gia đình trẻ. Mọi người đều nên có cơ hội sống và phát triển ở đây. Công việc làm với ngân hàng thực phẩm mỗi ngày, mình thấy rõ bà con mình vẫn còn khó khăn với bữa ăn hàng ngày. Trong khi đó, hỗ trợ từ chính phủ thì lại cứ bị cắt. Mình tin rằng ăn uống đầy đủ là quyền lợi cơ bản của con người. Không ai sống ở Corralville phải chịu đói cả. Mình cũng tin vào quyền tự quyết định ở địa phương. Corralville nên được tự quyết định những gì tốt nhất cho dân mình, chứ không phải chờ người khác nói thay. Mình sẽ tiếp tục bảo vệ quyền địa phương và giúp nhân viên thành phố có đủ nguồn lực để phục vụ cho bà con tốt. Corralville đang phát triển, và mình tin với sự lãnh đạo tại chỗ. Chúng ta sẽ cùng nhau xây dựng một thành phố sạch hơn, mạnh hơn, đoàn kết hơn. Mình hy vọng nhận được lá phiếu của bạn vào ngày 4 tháng 11. Cảm ơn bạn rất nhiều.
My name is Mike Knudsen, and I'm running for reelection for the Corralville City Council. I'd like to start by thanking the city of Corralville for this opportunity to directly address the citizens of Corralville. About me personally, I've lived in Corralville over 25 years, and in fact, as a college student before that. My wife and I raised our two daughters here and feel they both benefited from the partnership between the city and the Iowa City School District, which is something I've certainly supported in my time on council. I'm a physician-scientist and medical director of the Gallen Blood Bank and Donor Center at University of Iowa Healthcare. I'm an avid recreational and commuter biker and feel I've greatly benefited from the great trails in Corralville in the entire metro area, and I will continue to support the expansion and maintenance of the trails and parks within the city. About my experience with Corralville. In addition to my last four years on city council, I have nearly 20 years of experience as a volunteer, including former member of the Board of Adjustment, Corralville Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Parks and Rec Commission. In fact, during my time on the Parks and Rec Commission, I proposed a community garden, which I impugn say remains in use today. During my first term in office, I have committed to donate my city council member's salary to the Corralville Food Pantry, Houses into Homes, and Neighbors Helping Neighbors, which provides utility assistance to those in need. I certainly plan to continue with this commitment if I am reelected. Some of my perspectives. I believe in smart, environmentally conscious growth, including projects like the Coral Ridge Avenue that included state-of-the-art stormwater management and the recently completed Clear Creek Restoration Project. I support a strong, integrated public transportation system that includes an integrated bus system and pedestrian-friendly sidewalks and trails. I support the ongoing Gather Iowa Project, which is recently broken ground near First Avenue and Highway 6, with certainly with my support and the support of the city. I'm a supporter of the Corralville Library and contributed to the Capitol Campaign in the early 2000s. In these times of threats to individual freedoms, I am a strong supporter of all types of diversity: racial, economic, and sexual orientation. I've supported numerous affordable housing initiatives such as Coral North Apartments and will continue to support affordable housing options that make the city accessible to economically disadvantaged residents. If I am fortunate enough to be reelected to the Corralville City Council, I make the following commitments. I will continue to listen to all perspectives. I promise to use data-driven decision-making, something I do every day at my work. I promise my actions and votes will factor in the long-term effect that any policies have on the environment and on the disadvantaged. I promise to use my counsel to support continued economic growth in Corralville. In closing, I encourage you to contact me with any questions or concerns you have. My contact information is available on the city website, and I certainly hope you will support me on or before November 4th. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Marsh Pope, and I'm running for Corralville City Council. I just retired after 35 years as an antilocal chemist, supporting clinical trials. Those are the studies that determine if treatments will actually work, if patients will actually get better, if therapies are safe. I worked at Chapel Hill and in the biotech industry, and for the last 16 years, I've been running I'm the director of the Proteomics Core for the University of Iowa. In clinical trials, you can't guess, you can't cut corners. Ultimately, lives depend on accurate data. If you mess up, further time and commercial investment is just wasted. That's where I learned accountability, and that's where I learned stage-gating processes. That's a project management approach from biotech, where funding depends on hitting your measurable targets. If some things are not working, you stop and you fix it before you throw more good money at it. Now I have time to bring that expertise to city government, and honestly, I'm a little frustrated by what's going on, and I think you will be too. Last year, our city signed a contract with a surveillance camera company called Flock Security. They're putting license plate readers around town to eventually track every car that drives through Corralville. But here's what makes it worse. Flock just announced facial recognition is coming to these cameras. Flock just announced facial recognition is coming to these cameras. This will be a free upgrade, the default setting is on. Your face, your movements, your patterns, your behaviors are stored in their cloud, and they're shared with other agencies. But here's the lapse: nobody told you about it. Nobody asked the city council. The contract was signed without their knowledge. This is part of a bigger problem, really. We're in a software-as-a-service economy, and there's no turning back. Surveillance and AI have pushed the concept into hyperdrive. And right now, every dollar we spend on these systems goes to mega corporations on the coast. So that's where my questions come in. Why couldn't we improve our security here with our own dollars and efforts? Why can't we keep our tax dollars working here? Why can't Corralville build on its own infrastructure and create local jobs? These decisions actually matter. First, I would protect transparency in everything we do, no more secret contracts. Second, I'd be spending spending that delivers results, and that can be guaranteed by the stage gating method. Third, I'd start building our own infrastructure. I'm proposing a Phase 1 project to prove that Corralville can, in fact, host its own services. Something simple, a city-run chat box for information. Fourth, I care about water quality, as I am an analytical chemist. The decisions, again, matter. They affect your property taxes, your water quality, your kid's safety, whether your neighborhood has a voice in what gets built next door. I think you deserve a city council that listens before it decides, that measures results, not just intentions, that treats your money like it matters, because it does. My name is Robert Marshall Pope. I am asking for your vote on November 4th. I can't promise to fix every problem, but I can promise this: I'll show up, I'll do the work, and I'll tell you the truth, and I'll fight for transparency and accountability. I spent 35 years in clinical trials proving that I can. Vote for Marshall Pope for Corralville City Council, and I thank you very much for listening.
Hi, my name is Jennifer, or Jenny Struthers, and I am running for Corralville City Council. I was raised on the west side of Iowa City, where I attended Horn Elementary, Northwest Junior High, and West High School. After graduating from West High in 1993, I went on to the University of Iowa, where I earned a Bachelor's of Business in Administration. I then continued for an additional four years and earned my JD MBA also at the University of Iowa. In 2001, when I finally graduated, I relocated to Chicago, where I practiced law for three years at the law firm of Winston &amp; Strawn. I then relocated to St. Louis, where I practiced for an additional three years at the Paul Sinelli Law Firm. In the summer of 2007, my husband Bob finished his medical residency, and we relocated to Corralville, where we have been ever since. When arriving in Iowa, I was working remotely for my law firm in St. Louis. Then I transitioned to practicing law part-time for Chuck Orr at Orr &amp; Associates in Corralville, Iowa. Although I am still licensed to practice law, I have not practiced in the last several years. Over the last several years, I have focused on raising my two children and being very involved in the schools and other community organizations. For the past 13 years, I have served on the executive PTO board for either Wickham, Northwest, or West High. I have also been involved in the community as both a Girl Scout troop leader and Cub Scout volunteer. I have served on many committees and helped organize several school and community events and fundraising efforts. I have also worked in the Iowa City Community School District as a substitute teacher and have a lot of respect for the district and its employees. I am so proud and appreciative of Corralville's support of its local schools and would like to continue this support and dedication by serving as a member of the Corralville City Council. I am proud to be a resident of Corralville and believe the city's leaders have done a very good job, particularly in the development of the Iowa River Landing area. I hope to continue in the footsteps of those elected officials who have preceded me in developing common sense and fiscally prudent plans that allow Corralville continued growth and prosperity. The city has recently made improvements on its Go Bond rating, and I would like to make sure that it continues to improve. Although Corralville has done an exceptional job with its development, it has not lost its small-town feeling of community and helpfulness. I believe Corralville adds to the quality of life for all residents by providing excellent trails, parks, public meeting spaces, support to its wonderful library, and to the arts community with the maintenance of the Corralville Center for Performing Arts. All these things make Corralville a wonderful place to live, and I am committed to continuing support for these wonderful assets. I am running for Corralville City Council because I am committed to making a strong and positive contribution to my community. I am also dedicated to maintaining a friendly community where residents feel safe and heard. I will enter this position with an open mind and ready to listen to all residents' concerns. Thank you so much for your time.